Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizens comments on regular agenda items? Okay, seeing no more, then we will move into the budget and we have a presentation on the milage rate.
Yes, well, let me read, this is a resolution which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City of Puntagorda, Florida, adopting a proposed milage rate for fiscal year 2015 and setting a public hearing date.
Thank you.
Good morning. Sharon Nivenberg, Controller. This morning, we can choose, Mayor, either to give you a presentation, or we can go directly. Kristin, if you'll open it up, to the first PowerPoint slide was where we left off at the last, I'm sorry, Karen, can we have that computer? You're gonna have to put that button over here by us.[52.22][52.22](Laughter). This is where we left off at last week's public hearing on the discussion of the budget, and that was considering two milage rates. One would maintain the current milage rate, which would assist in balancing the budget and provide an additional $148,000. Or looking at a reduced milage rate, in the spirit of trying to give something back to the community, and yet be aware that additional paving needs to be handled. And that $104,000 represents one additional mile of paving that could be done for a two-lane residential street. So that was the consideration. And then, if you wanted to go further, we have the pro formas that show you side-by-side what the two milage rates look like if we were to do either one of them. And the change, of course, would be, at this point, would be allowing an additional forty-some-thousand dollars to go into your reserve, and you could either use it to assist in balancing 2016, or just leave it in reserves. So that's the point where we're at right now. The items that were discussed last week that are currently, have been placed in the budget, are using some of your reserves to fund additional road paving, an additional $150,000 from reserves, and an additional $104,000 from preserving some of the milage rate value from the July 1 assessed valuation. The second thing was to use $312,000 of your reserves to start funding a capital outlay funding program for the general fund for vehicles and equipment. And we have that outline of that information as well. The final one was to fund the needed capital for information technology. We talked about the backbone switch, it just sounds like a dinosaur to me, and we talked about needing the new phone system. And I think we were on a conference call with the city manager, and the phones went out, and he accused us of doing it on purpose.[195.87][195.87](Laughter). He had to call us back. Anyway, I'm...
I'm okay with going through the scenarios that you created. I think it's helpful for people to see.
So that's the side-by-side of what the two look like, and the change would be in the balance that's available for the following year. So then, if we go on to the next slide...
Carolyn.
Oh, I apologize.
Before we go on? Just for clarification, the 1% sales tax revenue, which ends in 2014, we now have in 2015, $525,000.
It ends December 31st of 2014, so it just happens...
That's still the amount of money then we have there.
It happens to carry over for the first three months of the new fiscal year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And while we're focusing, so if we look between the comparison of what's going to occur in '15 and how we're going to balance, we always take a look at '16, because, you know, that's the other shoe that needs to drop, and are the decisions we're making today help us balance for the future? Councilmember Freeland asked me yesterday very, and it was such a good question, why am I showing $980,000 of sales tax in 2016 when we haven't had the vote yet? This is purely a placeholder, because a council is aware and is concerned that some of the projects in the 1% sales tax list are not wants-to's, they are need-to's. And if we don't get the 1% sales tax, what will we do? So, you've highlighted in here the projects, the $980,000 that we need in 2016 to cover those projects, and later on, you have an agenda item where you'll go through that list. But that is the only reason there's any sales tax here. If we don't have that, what will we do with that need-to list? So it's just keeping it in front of us, that we do have an issue to deal with. So, looking at the pro forma, we have made one adjustment here from the last meeting, and based on the 4.13% increase that we're seeing for 2015, we felt it prud to look at '16 with the same eye. And so, we're showing now, instead of just a 2% increase in value, or actually net revenue, from '15 to '16, we're now showing 4%. So last week, when I showed you a million-dollar budget gap, you're now only seeing an $870,000 budget gap. Yes?
Remember, these are projections.
Right.
We start conservatively with our projections. So, when we come back to you in January with our long-range financial plan, you're gonna see another projection.
The, so your revenues are showing a 4% rather than a 2%, that is certainly something you can feel free to discuss this morning, or it's something we will bring up again next fall when we're developing the long-range plan. So, that's number one. Number two, the 1% sales tax is just a placeholder. By no means am I trying to forecast the vote of the election.
Sharon?
Yes, I'm sorry.
The $980,000 that you have in there as a placeholder, does that include any of the dollars that we spoke about yesterday that were not included in the capital projects CPI schedule? There was $108,000 that we spoke about, which was not included in the budget, the 2016 budget, and there was also a $46,000 shortfall against the $750,000 that was a suggested guideline.
It took, I think it took what you were concerned about in saying that we have this need over here, and I put it in the budget. And so, yes, it does cover, but only the 2016 needs, not '17, '18, and '19. So when we get to the other list, we'll see all the needs, and we'll see the equivalent milage rate that you asked me to calculate for that. Did that answer your question? It doesn't, and it does cover the $46,000 that we were talking about for the street lighting project. So that was assumed that you would continue on with that project from year to year.
We spoke about a $46,000 shortfall in the paving program as against the $750,000.
That is not in here. The shortfall...
That is not in that $980.
That is correct.
Okay, and then we talked about a $312,000 number for capital projects. And of that $312,000, $108,000 was not included in the 2016 budget, is that correct?
It was not included, it is now included, and that was another good point that you came up with. So that's why you'll see five-year capital outlay funding, 312. So I pulled the money out of what was budgeted, because we were $108,000 short. I pulled the entire amount out of operating expenditures and put the full 312 as a need.
Okay.
So, we've addressed that one, we have not addressed the paving one.
Okay.
So that one is still on the table to be looked at. And at some point, it is not in the PowerPoint, but I do have the gas tax fund pro forma with me, and if you want to see where we're at in trying to reach the funding level that Public Works recommended, we can bring that one up and show that to you. So, the 400, so, I'll go back up to revenues and just keep going one by one. The $157,900 number is the result of the milage rate that you're choosing with this scenario. This would be the 3.1779 milage rate. That would afford you that much reserves left from 2014, or, I'm sorry, 2015, that you could carry over to 2016. Then the operating expenditures use an assumption of a 3% increase in all operations. It assumes a 3% increase in personnel salaries, it assumes a 6% change in health insurance, it assumes a 15% increase in the general liability insurance.
15?
15.
Which is what we had.
Which is what we're experiencing this year. So we chose to be as conservative as possible on that one. Some years, we've dropped it back to 10. I'm not comfortable doing that, because we know that whole flood insurance is still a great concern. The expenditures, we've already gone over, the assumptions, so that would give us a shortfall of 870. Again, that's less than last week because of the change in the revenue assumption for ad valorem revenue. So that's scenario one, and I apologize, yes.
Sharon, this 2016 budget also includes a projection of a rate of return on our pension funds, similar to what we experienced this past year, is that correct?
That is correct. It would take the savings that we're going to experience from '14 to '15, and we budgeted flat from '15 to '16. And that's as good as we can do currently. And so, does that mean we assume that investments will do as well? Or do we assume that there will be turnover and our liabilities will decrease? It could be a combination of the two. I can at least assure you that October 1, the actuaries will have a number for 2016. They always do it a year in advance. So when we bring this back to you and begin working on 2016 long-range plan, we will have a finite number from the actuaries, and that will be very helpful.
Thank you.
So, in some ways, I guess, as you're pointing out, perhaps this is not as conservative as it could be, if we wanted to assume that pension costs would go up instead of staying flat.
We had a great year, and the pension funds had a terrific year.
Yes, we did. We did. And we have mitigated some of that. Originally, we were going to show a greater savings in '15, and we listened to your concerns about the unfunded liability and wanting to reduce it, and we requested the actuaries to reconsider and not use the percentage method, but go to a flat method of funding the unfunded, actuarially unfunded liability. They took it to the state, the state approved it. So that was taken to the, all three pension boards at their last meetings, and all three boards approved it. So we do have a conservative funding measure, we will budget a flat amount, and we will pay that amount October 1, which will also afford us a savings of 4%. And that is money that's actually in the plan and able to be invested for the full year, so we enjoy a savings from early payment.
And so then, at that time, we'll know if the amount for 2016 will go up or down?
Yes, we will.
Any other questions right now?
If we go to the next screen, we'll show the milage rate remaining the same as it is currently, the 3.1969. All numbers remain the same, except showing in '15 that you have additional funds remaining that you can carry over to '16. So your number is now 199,300 instead of the previous. So that gave you about $48,000 additional that you have to assist in balancing the pro forma. So, you're looking at a $785,000 shortfall. So those are the, those are the two that we have for your review this morning.
Now, Sharon, though, for 2016, wouldn't our reserve requirement go up to 6.5%?
We did not show that, we were not sure if that's, that was our plan to try and increase it a half a percent a year. In light of the shortfall, I did not show that. So you are correct.
That's our objective. When we come back to you, we'll ask you to do that. That's our objective, just a policy.
And if we do that, that would...
I thought we'd agreed to that.
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
Well, we have to come back to you each year, and you can formally, unless you want to formally do it now, you can do that, but we, because being it's a policy, each year you decide, for instance, you may decide not to put as much money into the capital outlay reserve. We have it shown, you may tweak that.
Well, can we decide today to budget for the 6.5% for 2016?
You can.
Yes, you can. You can make that a part of your revised financial policy, yes you can.
Recognizing that if we do that, we're going to maintain that for next year, for 2016, and therefore, we will probably need to up our milage rate just to meet that demand.
Well, it's gonna affect the shortfall.
Right.
Yes, it will.
It'll affect the shortfall at this time, but I think we really need to be budgeting 6.5% for 2016.
We all agreed on that.
We agreed on that.
We agreed on that, so I would say we need to show it.
Yes, we do need to show it.
All right, then, we will change that. The, if we go to the next screen, these are the discussions of what does the milage rate affect on a $150,000 homesteaded residence? And as you can see, we put both up here, both milage rates, and the difference is the $7 and the $5 respectively, increase over the current milage rate value. And if we go to the $300,000 homesteaded residence on the next screen, you'll see that it's $15 and $10 over the current milage rate. The final slide that I have here for you is the question that was asked of the needs. Now, this is the full needs, not just the $980,000 that we need for 2016. So this is the full $3,290,000 of projects over a six-year period of time. We divided it by five, because we have a five-year, we have a five-year look here. That would be a funding need of $658,000 a year, which is the equivalent of an additional .2852. What I neglected to put on your slide, and Councilwoman Freeland asked last night, so I have it ready for you, is what is that in terms of dollars? And so, at the, it would be $29 on the $150,000 homesteaded property, and $72 on the $300,000 homesteaded property, is what the value of that. So I think it's an important piece of information when people are looking at the vote and saying, do I want to continue paying the 1% sales tax? And if I don't, and if the only alternative we have to fund these is a milage rate, what would that mean to me on my bill for the following year?
Thank you, that's exactly what I was looking for the last time.
And if you, if you would like to look at the gas tax pro forma, we can do that one as well.
Sure.
Just so that it's clear.
Yeah, Rose or...
Karen, this will have to just be up on the Elmo, please. Thank you.
You're gonna have to zoom in.
And this is gonna be small numbers, I apologize.
You gotta zoom in a little bit.
We're gonna have to really zoom this in, because I don't have a copy, and I'm not gonna be able to read that little stuff. So I can feel the pain of the audience, I apologize. What, this is just a, we were focusing on the general fund side of assisting the paving program, and I think what I neglected to talk about is the gas tax funding side of this. So as you can see, well, maybe you can't see, but in 2014, the funding is $245,000 coming from gas tax. In 2015, we now have the official state number, and they expect it to be $255,000. So with that, and if we continue with the funding that we now have in place coming from the general fund, Kristin, can you read me the numbers at 86...
Yeah, the 609, we're coming from the general fund.
The total paving is 864?
864.
Total paving is 864. And if you'll recall, the Public Works requested an increase from 600 to 750. So we're actually being able to do better in 2015 than what they requested.
So those are the reserves that we decided to put into the paving program?
The reserves and the additional milage rate.
Okay.
Would get you to that number. In '16, which is going out just a little bit further, we're only looking at the additional 104 from milage rate. If you choose that, remember, that's an annual decision that you'll make, that's not a permanent decision you make today. If you continue the additional milage rate, you have a program of $719,000, and that's assuming, again, this is assumptions, that the gas tax will grow a little, 2%. And so you would have a funding program of $719,000, which, as Councilmember Kavanaugh pointed out, is below what Public Works recommended of 750.
Hasn't there been some issues about the expectation of revenues from gas tax increasing rather than decreasing because of the concern with the economy and the new types of engines that are coming out in these vehicles? And I've heard that they were gonna come up with a new formula to try and get the same amount of revenue using some different formulas, so I don't know how comfortable I would be with that projection.
With the projection of a 2% increase. We have seen the gas tax revenue be a very volatile revenue source, but we have, you know, 10 years of history that we can look back at. And so, looking at that, I was comfortable with the 2%. Now, if the legislature changes things, my history is not valuable in looking forward. But we do see that people pull back, I mean, when we reach that $4 a gallon, or if we go above the $4, you will see a pullback in gallons of gas. And for those of you that may not be aware, this tax is on the gallons, not the dollars. So when people use less gas, this revenue source actually decreases, even though the price of the gas has gone up. And so that may be, if the legislature would change that, that would be helpful.
And what about when gas prices go down? Is there more consumption historically?
Yes, it does go up. It does go up. So I think this is a very elastic tax.
Carolyn?
This is off-topic, but perhaps we should think about this in terms of legislative issues, in terms of the gas tax, and what the legislature is going to do with it, again, just as a...
Reminder?
A reminder.
And the other concern that we will keep in front of you is that this is a shared revenue with Charlotte County. And we can either go by the state formula, or we can go with an inter-local agreement. And the formula is quite stringent. It looks at what the county has spent on paving roads, and what the city has spent on paving, well, it's all road maintenance. And the formula obviously doesn't work in our favor. So the inter-local agreement has always been better for us. So that, again, works into the political discussion.
Well, it seems like every time it's been reconfigured that I've been here, it does not work out in our favor.
The formula doesn't, the inter-local...
Well, the inter-local, we took on more the last time we revised it. We took on more road maintenance.
We did, but it still worked in our favor, as opposed to the formula.
Better than.
Better than.
Well, I see what you're saying, that in 2016, we're only at 719, but really, what we're trying to do this next year is play a little bit of catch-up. So whether we're at the number that they say, we're definitely, from this, getting closer to that, to be able to fund what the needs are. So, I'm okay with...
We can, Karen, you can put it, if we're done with the gas tax fund discussion, we'll put it back to your milage rate information, and I will turn the discussion over to you.
Put the milage rate chart on again.
The first, the first one?
Okay. So, what we need today is a council approval of a tentative rate that we can advertise, and it'll be placed on the trim notices, and we'll get public input.
Kim?
I would like to see us keep it where it is right now, for various reasons. We don't know what's gonna happen with the 1% sales tax. Every year, we are using reserves to balance our budget. When we lower the milage rate, I would like to do it on solid footing, because we have building and we have people here, and it's a real reduction for a real reason. And I just kind of feel like we're trying to give something that we really shouldn't right now, to balance the, you know, for a long term, you know, we're gonna raise it to 6.5 because we want to increase our reserves, but we really need those reserves. So it's, you know, I feel like we're kind of playing a little bit of a shell game like that.
I don't disagree, because a lot of the decisions that we made last week are one-time decisions because of the way we have been using our reserves. So, I'm in agreement. Tom?
From last week until this week, I also have had some heartburn about the decision that we came to last week, and we are entering, looking at another year with almost a $900,000 deficit, and we're reducing the milage rate, doesn't make sense to me. I think next year, we'll be in a lot better position after we know what's gonna happen, what could happen with the 1% sales tax, and I think that we should keep the milage the way that it is, for now.
I agree. I don't, can't disagree with the logic, but I feel like with our property values increasing, what we're, the signal we're sending is, we're going to leave the milage rate the way it is, and allow our taxes to continue to go escalate, and people's homes, the taxes on homes escalate, and the message that I've heard from people is, is they want to see us try to do what we can to lower the milage rate as property values rise, so that we're not continually doing what has been done in the county and just letting it ride. So it's, to me, it's a message that we're sending to our residents.
I think we need to be clear, though, in terms of the message that we are sending. We're looking at a very modest increase this year, with the opportunity to not have to increase next year perhaps $72 on a $300,000 home. I mean, what we're trying to do, I perceive us to do anyway, is to start building those reserves, start building, again, the money that we need to provide the services that are expected in our community. I think we would be doing our residents a disservice if we should drop it at this point in time. It does not make sense, we've had two organizations recommend to us to maintain it as it is. It just seems that it is appropriate.
And, and I think Mr. Rose said it, it was a token idea, that we, you know, really thought it was kind of a branch to extend, but it really doesn't make sense right now because of our revenues. And operationally, the city has done such a great job keeping, you know, keeping that down and finding ways to do more with a lot less. And even, you know, our capital needs as far as our fleet replacement, we all know all this, the technology, the IT department, we've made those cuts in the past, and they're catching up, and they're catching up very quickly. And so, I'm okay with the current rate. Tom?
I would just like to say, again, that each year that I can remember, we've been balancing the budget with the general reserve. I really don't think that's the purpose of the general reserve. If we're gonna do that, then we should call it something else. If we're really trying to create a reserve, and I think that we should, an appropriate reserve, I think that we should, at this point in time, keep the milage the way it is. I think Howard has done a terrific job, and there's only so many pencils he can take away from the employees, I mean, there's so far that we can go.
And we have done that, we have done that.
Taking pencils.
Every year that I've been here, this is the first time we're actually giving something very small back.
It's, looking at the big picture of the budget is, our cities is increasing in needs, our pathways are increasing, the services that are needed are increasing, but we're keeping the milage rate the same. That can't happen. I mean, we keep, like Tom said, using these reserves, it's really the general fund. I talk to the citizens all the time, I'm a total representative of the citizens, I listen to what they want. They love what we're doing with the city, that's why they live here, this is what they want. If they don't like it, they need to come out and say that they don't. If they don't like it, they need to come out and say that they don't like it. Because these things are going to increase, and the only way to keep it down is to have more people move here, more people visit here, to be paying those taxes. Because the services are going to go up, and they have to be paid for. So the big question is, do we like what we have and what's going on, or Katy bar the door and let's not let anyone else in, and just shut it down where we are right now? And don't mow the parks, and don't pick up the trash? I mean, these, we're making more parks. It's going to cost more money. So we're trying to make our community attractive to bring more people here. I think we all like what we have. I think the citizens love what we have. But we have to look at the budget that way. This is a whole budget, and the budget provides services. I mean, it's just different. It's a different way of looking that the private sector looks at things. You would never do this in a private sector business. Oh, I'm going to use my reserves. No. That's not what that's for. I mean, they're for something else. So we know what we have. We know what we're building. If we get the 1 percent and we start building more, those things are going to have to be maintained. I mean, so that's what we're trying to do with going up with the reserves. Once we're not using our reserves anymore, then we have a full, realistic budget that we're looking at. It's a real budget. It's not you guys working your magic, which by the way, is incredible. I mean, because they are thinking of all of these things that are coming up in the future and the plans. Okay, now they have this plan, and we approve something, well, that's going to cost this to maintain that. And they keep all of that. How you do it is amazing to me, but good job. That's my two cents.
One more comment that you, what you were saying, it's spurred my interest in this list that we had for the needs and the additional millage rate. And this whole entire list affects the whole entire city. It does not affect one neighborhood. It does not affect one group of citizens. It affects everyone. Well, the one neighborhood it does affect is kind of the forgotten neighborhood that we've talked about. And they really do need the work over there in that neighborhood. The other things, the fire, the police, the storm sewer, I mean, that affects the way our city looks and the way our city operates and the safety of our city. So I think, you know, these needs do reflect the entire city. It's not, it's not council members picking projects, but it's just not that way. So, and if the sales tax does not pass, these are going to be hard decisions to make next year. You know, Sharon's done a good job of showing us what that's going to look like. So I feel comfortable with the current rate because of, there's just too many extenuating circumstances right now to lower it the little bit that we talked about.
Why make a motion to...
I'd like to make a comment. I feel like if we were to keep it where it is, then that extra money needs to go into reserves, and to put that into our reserves. It could go above and beyond the 6 percent, but it needs to go into reserves.
That's where it will go.
And we're still okay with putting the 104 into paving?
Yes. Well, I heard a lot of positive feedback on what was reported about increasing the amount of maintenance on our roads, and residents saying, please come and look at my road. So residents have been very pleased with that.
And I think the county is a good example. I mean, they're $300 million behind on their roads. That's what one of the commissioners told me. You know, they basically need the 1 percent sales tax to address their road issues. And, you know, we've done a decent job, but we do need to play catch-up again. So we're okay with the current rate, and we're going to...
Need to vote.
Okay. I'm just discussing it before we get a motion. And we're still going to earmark for next year the 104,000 into the paving budget.
Yes.
Okay, so we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to keep our millage rate at the current rate.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second, to keep the current rate, 3.1969. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
And we just want to make sure that in the resolution, that we identify the date of the public hearing in the fall.
And the...
The resolution provides that the public hearing date shall be September 3, 2014, at 5:01 PM. City Council Chairman.
Thank you.
Not at 5, 5:01. Okay.
Do you have a powerpoint?
Yes.
Is everybody okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now we will move into the 1 percent local option sales tax project list.
Which one are you starting?
We're putting this on the screen as well. I need the, let's start with the eight-year.
The eight-year one?
Currently, we have, we have recommended and sent to Charlotte County an eight-year extension totaling $16 million. And those are the projects that were recommended by the committee, Steering Committee, and then approved by City Council. We have heard word from Charlotte County that they are going to consider on July 15, at 2 o'clock, in a special meeting in the administration, County Administration Building, 2 o'clock, July 15. They're going to receive a space study presentation about the Justice Center and the consultant. And then they're going to hold a public meeting on whether to split the sales tax into two options. Want to go to the next slide? We will have a, they're going to discuss whether to ask the voters to approve a six-year extension, and the voters will also be asked to approve a two-year extension beyond that. So it's going to be two different options that the county will be considering on July 15. And if they approve those two options on July 15, then they will be amending their ordinance, and we will be voting on six years and two years. We have prepared the six-year and a two-year list that we'll send to the county upon your approval today. It was basically the original six-year program that the Steering Committee recommended, plus the extra two years that they recommended should go into a second tier.
So Howard, how does that affect, how does the city's wording, is that affected by?
No.
So when they say, yes or no, extend an additional two years for the Justice Center expansion, are city projects going to be listed in there?
Right there.
Okay. They will be listed?
The categories.
Okay.
Yes. And we're going to send this, well, however the county decides to market it. I don't know whether the actual ballot will show these or not. It's the county will decide how to market.
The language?
Yeah, the language, not us. And we're going to send them these categories upon your approval today. But they do, they would like representation on July 15, if any council members can be there. I have an employee meeting at that time.
I will be there.
But if council members...
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I will not.
I will be there, but aren't we going to be expected to represent the position of the city with regards to either the six years or the eight years at that point?
That would be helpful.
Should we then...
They probably want to hear from us.
Should we then try and achieve consensus at today's meeting on that issue, so we present the united front, when we go up there?
Sure.
I think that would be great.
Well, I personally just am so pleased that they are going to split it, or thinking about splitting it. And I would hope that we would recommend splitting it from six years and two years, so that in case people are still, have the, you know, the bug about the Justice Center, that at least we can get the first six years moved along.
Is that the kind of consensus you're looking for? I mean, I'm okay with this new language that they're considering. I think it's helpful.
I think if we decide to, I think perhaps we can draft a letter to the commissioners expressing our support of the six years with an additional two years.
I agree. I would totally agree with that. There's been nothing but pushback from the community. And I agree with you, Kim. We do listen to the residents. That's how all of this got put together. It was a very community-driven process. And it's been derailed, in my opinion, by the addition of the two years. So I think doing it like this gives the residents, the citizens, the choice.
I agree. I think this is going to be important for it to pass. I mean, and it's all about how they market it. I mean, it's up to them to get the citizens to understand what it's all about. I mean, I see the need, but...
And I like Tom's idea of that a letter.
Yes.
That would be...
They, we'll draft a letter, and...
Saying that we support this ballot language, the proposed?
And it would be nice if any council, maybe if you're going to be there, read it into the record when they ask.
Sure, sure.
First, we need to approve this.
That would be great. Move approval.
Yeah, this makes sense. It's going back to our, before we got into this extension.
I have one comment on the breakdown. If we could, if we look at the first item on, that would pop up if the additional two years were approved, we speak about the waterfront activity center design. The lease for the Bayfront Center is set to expire on 2021. That is a year afterward. It's about the same time as the six-year extension would increase it. If there was a way for us to take that activity, the design of the waterfront center and find a way to move it up, to occur within the first six years, I think it will be a prudent thing for us to do, to have a design ready for when the lease is up at Bayfront. At least we have some kind of a plan, if there's a way that we can do that. Just tossing it out there.
The Steering Committee had a discussion on that. There is a way. You know, these are recommended projects. Some of them may come in less than what is estimated. There may be a project on the first tier that may never even happen, because Burnstour Isles is meeting Friday to discuss, among other things, the Macedonia sidewalk. If they come back and recommend to council on August 13, when you come back, that you take it off the list, well, that frees up about $280,000.
$280,000.
Yeah.
I just think that Bayfront is such an essential component of our waterfront that we really need to have as much time to get citizen input on what we want to see there, and spend some time in the design over the next six years if we can make that happen.
Is there any support for Tom's idea to move it up into the top tier? Or you'd, I'm okay with leaving it in the second, and like Howard said, you know, we can reconfigure as the...
And I'm okay with that, too, Mary. I just think if funding becomes available, that that be the one that we push up there?
Number one and tier two.
Number one and tier two.
Yes, it's very logical.
But the other way of maybe thinking about this is push it up into the first six years, so that we get the first six years. You know, it's the support in the first six years of...
What are you going to take out?
Take out Macedonia and put it down in sidewalks. But, well, I mean, that, you know, that way they can make decisions, and we don't, you know, if they decide to take it out...
They have some time to mull it over.
We can take it out out of the second year. But at least that, we know then it would be up in the top run.
I think we need to wait to hear from Burnstour Isles before we...
You made that commitment to wait for Burnstour Isles.
I mean, in a way, I could say, feel though that we're not saying no, we're just changing the priority.
Just where it goes, yes.
How about if, if, how, can we just say that if the Macedonia sidewalk comes out, the waterfront activity center moves up? Can we say that? Can we agree on that?
Okay, we may.
Because we're talking about design.
Yes.
Design.
Conceptual plan.
That's not a million six.
No. What was the dollar amount?
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand. So can we be in agreement that if Macedonia sidewalk does come off the list, that the design for the waterfront activity center moves up into tier one?
Yes.
Yes.
And if not, it will be the first priority in tier two?
As funds, if funds become available from tier one.
Yes.
That's fine with me.
Does that...
Yeah, we have plenty of time to revise it.
Okay.
Let the Burnstour Isles...
You got the message?
Yeah. Let the Burnstour Isles homeowners group have a meeting. When you come back on August 13, we may have another revised list for you.
Okay.
Right. Okay, so I guess my question would be, in terms of our marketing. I mean, that's what we're doing. We're marketing this list.
They're going to market the categories.
Well, then perhaps as a category, rather than saying pathway harbor walk, maybe we should separate out the waterfront activity center as a category.
I would be okay with that. I see what you're saying. It's kind of getting lost in that category and in that estimate of 1.6 million, because it almost makes it look like we're building the waterfront activity center, but we're not. We're just doing the design. Waterfront, yes.
We're not even doing the design.
Well, conceptual plan.
It is a public facility, so would it not go inside, in the public facility category?
That fits.
It could.
Might not get lost there.
I understand what you're trying to say. It draws more attention to it.
You want us to move it to public facilities?
Well, you're probably not going to have this whole list. I mean...
No, we're not going to have that list.
But we are going to be promoting it to our residents.
Sure.
And I think that's where the important part is. I mean, as we know, last time around, Miss Ponna Gorda, that did not support the sales tax. So we still have a great deal of marketing to do, I think, with our residents.
But when we hear from Burnstour Isles in August, we'll have the opportunity to change the list, as Howard mentioned.
We will.
And in the materials that we might use to let people know and inform people on our website and whatever, we'll include an updated list. It doesn't include that today, but in another month from now.
I'd be okay with pulling it out on its own. I think even under public facilities, it's, I mean, if you think it's going to help with the marketing.
It's, I think we should pull it out.
It can't hurt.
It can't hurt. Let's pull it out.
I think we should pull it out.
Have it stand on its own.
For now, you want it pulled out on tier two.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can...
It's the first item.
Yeah, we can pull it out, have it as a separate category under tier two. And then it might move up to tier one.
With the dollar amount.
On the 13th.
Okay.
There likely will be quite a bit of conversation about it, one would think.
We've had a lot of conversation about this list. How many agenda items have we had? If we haven't mulled this list over, wow. So is everybody clear now on our, the list that exists today on the 1 percent local option sales tax projects for the city? Okay. Okay, next, we have a resolution.
Before this, Karen, if I'm not mistaken, we need to adjourn as the City Council...
We do.
David?
Please do that.
We need to adjourn as the City Council and convene as the governing body of the Burnstour Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District.
Is everybody still okay with, okay? All right, so we are going to adjourn City Council.
And convene as the governing body of the Burnstour Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District.
Okay, now we are the Burnstour Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District.
And we have a resolution for your consideration, which I'll read by title only. A resolution adopting a tentative levy of annual special assessment for the Burnstour Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District for fiscal year 2015.
But I didn't get to say all, all officials are present for the Burnstour Isles Canal Assessment District. Okay, so we have the resolution adopting a tentative levy for the Burnstour Isles Canal Maintenance for...
$400.
$400, which stands as it was.
Move approval. Second?
Public hearing?
No, well, you, you, you know what? Well, we actually opened up for public hearing as the City Council, so just to be absolutely correct, we are now in a different hat, so open it up for the public, the citizen comments as you sit as the governing body of the Burnstour Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District.
Okay. We will now have a public hearing on the assessment for the Burnstour Isles Canal Maintenance District. If you have any public comments, please come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes. Public comment on Burnstour Isles.
We'll close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
And, mayor, if we can also read the setting of the tentative public hearing in September?
Well, the resolution does provide that the public budget hearing to consider adoption of the special assessment will be held on September 3, 2014 at 5:01 PM in city chambers.
So, we had a motion and a second?
Both who want to make the motion again now that you've done the hearing?
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution for Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance District. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. So, now, we will adjourn the Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District. And, we will call to order the Punagorda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District.
And...
And, we're all present.
And, we do have a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution adopting a tentative levy of annual special assessment for the Punagorda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District for fiscal year 2015.
And, the assessment is staying the same at $500. And, we will open a public hearing. If anybody would like to comment on the Punagorda Isles Canal Maintenance District assessment, please come to the podium. Public comment on the canal, PGI canal assessment. Seeing none?
Pursuant to the resolution, the public...
Do we need to close? Move to close the public hearing. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
I was gonna mention, the public budget hearing to consider adoption of the special assessment will be on September 3, 2014 at 5:01 PM in city council chambers.
Move approval of the resolution?
We have a motion, a second, to approve the Punagorda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment at $500. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Now, we are to adjourn as the public, Punagorda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District and reconvene as the city council.
Okay, we are adjourned as the Canal Maintenance District and now, we are back in the city council meeting. We're all present.
We just do this so well.
That went through a machine.
Karen wants me to say that.
And, next year, you'll get to do a third assessment district for the lot mowing, but this year, it was held early. But, the public hearing will also be the same day in September. So, we'll hold all three assessment, public hearings.
So, we maybe need to note that on the agenda for next year to public, it needs to be a public hearing, so...
Already noted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business and now, we move into new business, discussion of parking issues within cul-de-sacs and roundabouts. I'm guessing Terry.
Since you were looking at me. Karen, can I get out my books?
For the Recreteria Tab Zoning Official, staff had received complaint regarding vehicles that would park in a manner that blocked the turnaround that is near the end of Colony Point Drive. That particular turnaround is not as large or wide as a standard cul-de-sac. The center island of a standard cul-de-sac, I've, I've been advised, is 45 feet. This is 18 and the road width is narrow there and especially when somebody pulls in in the manner that those vehicles were. It's absolutely an issue for the blocking of it. There were, have also been concerns raised with vehicles that have parked in the roundabouts within the Lashley Park area. There, there are a couple of areas where you actually have a pull-off area that is designed as a parking space, but the entire roundabout and, and some of the roundabouts, there's not space left that a vehicle should be parked. It's especially problematic for fire apparatus to make that turn. They need the entire width of that in order to make it. So, based on that, we, the code doesn't address these particular issues as it's currently written. And, we were looking for direction as to how we would like to address this.
I just had questions about signage. I mean, I would hate to have to put up more signs over in Lashley, but I do agree with, do agree that the cars should not be parking there. I mean, there are a couple of parking spaces on the roundabout, but not, they shouldn't be actually parked in the roundabout. And, Howard suggested maybe we could do some yellow curbing to indicate no parking instead of having to put up more signs. That was my main concern.
Do you wanna show, do you have Lashley? Pardon me? Do you have Lashley Park?
I have the black and white of, yeah. Let me pull that one up here.
And, in this instance, there is a sign there. I wonder if, if we did approve, if we did wanna go through with it, if we could attach no parking to the sign that's already existing there in that cul-de-sac?
This is Lashley Park and when delivery trucks or even just regular trucks, when they park in the roundabout, it's tough to get by.
Well, I was there, after I met with you, Howard, on Monday, I went through, over there just to take a look. And, there was a coffee delivery truck parked where this white vehicle is. And, it was difficult enough for me in my car to get through. I could not imagine any public safety vehicle trying to get through there. If something happened and a child was injured at the interactive fountain or whatever. And, I think you also mentioned to me that people tend to park in the, in that, the turnaround down by the fishing pier.
Oh, yeah.
And, so, I think, you know, a, a yellow, perhaps a yellow curbing there, just to, if that would work. But, I know people park all over this. And, I also noticed that there are loading docks there at the crab house, but they're always filled full of pickup trucks of the employees or somebody at the, at the crab house. So, a loading, you know, a delivery truck can't pull in there because they're occupied. So, they're using this as their alternate loading area, so...
Well, once we, if we, if we adopt this and if the delivery trucks start getting tickets, I'm sure that the Lashley Crab House, if that's the offender, they'll move those vehicles. It won't take long.
Do you think we should let them know?
Of course, of course. Yeah, of course. We'll let all the people know.
Right. It, it's, you know, I don't object to people doing what they need to do because we don't have any kind of code about it, but I am concerned about the safety of the park. And, and, you know, we could say that, well, let's just do it during event, when there's an event. But, when there are children playing at the, at the interactive fountain, you don't know when something's going to happen, so you really need to be prepared for all times.
Well, and, I'll get to you in one second, Kim, but say that car parks there, that doesn't stop two more people from pulling right in behind and thinking, oh, this is more convenient than going into the lot? And, on days when it's crowded, I'm sure that happens, Kim?
That's exactly what happens. I go there a lot and I think the, I would, I would agree with the yellow. I think everyone knows, I hate to see another sign too. People know you don't park in a yellow zone. And then, that's exactly what happens at the end. They park all around there and you can't get a car.
Do you have the end?
You, you know, you can't drive your car. I've had to back out of there many times. And, that's not necessarily safe because you have little kids that are running back and forth in the interactive fountain. I mean, it's very dicey when you have to do that.
Could we even paint on the curb, no parking on the curb itself? Do we do that anywhere? Do we, have we done that?
Not that I'm aware of. We have, we have yellow. That's universal.
Right.
I guess it...
I think the yellow curb would, should work.
Yep.
And, if it doesn't, then perhaps we need to think about something else. But, I think at this first round, I think a yellow curb would be appropriate.
Yep.
Now, there is no curb though on Colony Point.
No, but there is a sign there.
There is a sign there.
There is a sign, okay.
There is a sign there.
Could we attach it to that sign so we don't have to put up another sign?
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
That would work for me.
What's that sign say?
It says, no turnaround beyond this point.
Oh, okay.